It's eight o'clock and we call meeting to order. And we've got everybody here tonight for roll call. In addition to the agenda, we have number eleven on the business and number two on the personnel. There's no others, correct?
Okay.
Okay, there's those additions and I didn't pay the motions without. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Second, okay. We move to the discussion. Here you're going all with the favors, if you want to say aye.
Aye.
If you want to say aye. Motion carries. District seven forty-one is product, Tucker Wendron, Earl Eaglescoff. Cammy Shankman, grade twelve, Maria Molitor, grade twelve, Ricky Wilson, grade twelve, received the FFA's highest rank in the state degree. Casey Carlson was the first secondary at Gainesville Elementary School during one million words of past school year. Four athletes from Gainesville participated in the state special Olympics. Bradley Bradley Bowles and Mavs, grade seven, second in the two hundred meter, third in the relay. Andrew Larson, grade seven, first in the two hundred meter. Brittany Dallow, grade six, was first in a hundred meter and third in the relay. John Desmond, grade eleven, was first in a hundred meter and third in the team relay. Gainesville Elementary School students who were reading more than one million words during the eleven twelve school year. Taylor Schmidt, grade five. Anthony Maker, grade four. Dan Leighton, grade four. Brooklyn Schorr, grade three. Abby Schaefer, grade four. Ashley Adiah, grade five. Britta Johnson, grade three. Victoria Shutey, grade four. Sam Maury, grade five. Megan Meyer, grade four. Matthew Butch, grade three. Sidney Anderson, grade five. Lindsey Be- Lindsey Beavers, grade five. Bobby Harbaugh, grade three. Olivia Riley, grade five. Amy Christie, grade three. Oraya Murray, grade five. Hudson Schimpf, grade five. Alan Evans, grade four. Eric Gaby, grade three. Preston Carlson, grade five. Anthony Stanning, grade five. Kevin Dunson, grade five. Eric Johnson, grade five. Eric Wade, grade four. Stan Stetson, grade four. Ray Swich, grade four. Max Wider, grade five. Casey Carlson, grade two. David Puckey, grade four. Alan Bird, grade three. John Nelson, grade four. Jerrianna Miller, grade four. Kirsten Campbell, grade four. Samantha Lizer, grade four. Julianne Selwrich, grade five. Grant Rookie, grade three. Zach Schrober, grade five. Luke Johnson, grade five. Emily Messer, grade four. Emily Harbaugh, grade five. Eddie Miller, grade five. Johnny Ruhma, grade four. Rip Lane, grade five. Joe Kern, grade five. Uh, Gainesville Elementary students who are reading more than two million words during the eleven twelve school year. Ashley Sorbo, grade three. Anthony Baker, grade four. Lauren Bell, grade four. Elementary school students who are reading more than three million words during the twelve year. And Toby, grade five. Justin Anderson, grade four. Asie Anderson, grade five. Ron, grade four. Megan Lawson, grade four. Island Area Elementary School top reader for the eleven twelve school year reading four million and three hundred and three thousand two hundred and forty-four words. Okay, uh, following Gainesville area students on Gainesville basketball to qualify for nationals. Eighth grade was Paula Riley until we found again. Ninth grade were Trent Perkins, Alex France, Dr. Wendron, Nick Ryan, Mitchell Wyner, Nick Giedman, Travis Seaver. Was there? And Quay, Dave Higgle, and Brandon Schaefer. Okay, uh, public comments, if anybody here for that. We'll move on to approve the recommends from our last meeting, which was the June twenty-sixth of the quarter. Tom. Tom. Second. Second, approve. We move to the discussion. Clearing out all with the favors, if you want to say aye.
Aye.
If you want to say aye. Motion carries. Okay, we'll move on to the financial reports. We've got the uh, trophy report, the motion balance sheet. Is anybody have questions for Bob on the table?
You know what's down there that Bob is someone's um, over there is like in the main just here is a dumb call.
Yeah, you're talking about the very bottom for fifty.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think one of those particular ones deals with hockey. And we put some money out, but it does come back again. Once the two individuals end of the year, that will not be.
French services.
Yes. And then the other one is the yearbook, the twenty-eight-six, twenty-twenty-five is the yearbook again. We put it on the alt and now it says thirteen through the yearbook.
Do you have any numbers on the table?
Um, yeah, the first part, um, top of page is two thousand five hundred and twenty-five and the two thousand four is an annual or part work installers. Um, they're offset, um, and they depend up with the two thousand five hundred and ninety here. Um, the two thousand forty-seven in the middle is special ed. And um, we give somebody back to that, that is not that we have got the reimbursement for that yet, but there's a chance that I could remain submated to the year, but that is a special account. But waiting for the percentage to come back. And I think, um, the other ones on the bottom are staff development pieces. Um, if we're not budgeted and and right now, if you take a look, there's thirty-four thousand five hundred and sixty-eight. That will be switched costs of those souls. We have not used that particular part of the budget, so that will offset the negative numbers that you see in there. So although they're rented in the hole, in actual, they're budgeted my errors, they're close. Yes.
Is that my next, in the next month, do we have that cleaned out?
Yes, I should be cleaning up by the end of next month.
The other two would be like on the other side. On the third page. The thirty-six dollars.
Um, yeah, the thirty-six dollars would be a special transport, is the special transport in transportation. And it's also, um, I don't see a chapter. The forty-seven thousand deals with technology, we had to purchase it before we got the money for it. All right? Yes, so that will even itself all once we get the dollars for that. Um, three-six, um, three-four-four really does deal with special ed transportation. And again, we have done reimbursement for that. But also if you look at the sixty-three, able for that also if I budgeted there, so in actual, we're already not too far behind. I can't say that we're going to pool all the costs in the special ed transportation issue. Yes, yeah, once we get everything we can file, it will be fine.
Any other questions? I like most of the protein and ask them to work the same. Second, the second number. We move to the discussion. Clearing out all with the favors, if you want to say aye.
Aye.
If you want to say aye. Motion carries. On to the bills.
Um, I had an opportunity on Monday afternoon ago and reviewed additional June and the volume. And I'm seeing from number one, we've followed the recommendation to to be available.
Any motion of our two day bills? Second, write down. We move to the discussion. Clearing out all with the favors, if you want to say aye.
Aye.
If you want to say aye. Motion carries. And we have four, five, six, seven, eight, ten, eleven, and ten, eleven, eleven, eleven. There's any, probably have a lot to do with discussion or the comments and the eleven from Bob.
Dean, I got a question on six.
Okay.
Can we rotate that around as far as the money? If we would make this one.
My understanding is that we're consistent, we do mix it up so that all the things do a piece of it. But to my knowledge, I don't believe we've rotated them through. I would have to check on that, um, I don't know.
It's been a few years that what they did, I don't know what you call it, received information from all the banks as to what they offered and then it was divided up, so with everything, but they have.
I know, just reading, just reading ahead, I thought there's more money in the payroll account probably to use. I don't know, does that seem fair? Are we rotating?
I think basically when we went through that process.
It caused different losses. Yes, it caused different issues.
So it basically was you kind of put it out in the bills?
Yeah, kind of, yeah. But we still, but we still, for the higher accounts, the ones that were more activity, um, I think that's why we knew that was, um, uh, creating. Because of the fee for not investing or.
To forget about the video files.
Yeah, and then we looked at that point, but we always, we always, I mean, I think the thing about maybe two years' time or about a year on. Can't remember exactly when I was.
It's been a couple of years.
And we can be looked at, I mean, if he wants to navigate that process and look at it again, I guess it won't be a big deal. I think the biggest thing with the fees, you know, transfers and stuff, that you were transferring every day, seems like we're dealing with that minimum. Transfers.
Well, I can answer my question. My next question.
So at this point, is the board buying this, leaving it as is, or go, we need research?
Yep.
Clearing out. Okay, motion by that, second, second number. We move to the discussion. Clearing out all with the favors, if you want to say aye.
Aye.
If you want to say aye. Motion carries. Okay, number one on your business, review and consider approval of a P schedule in twelve thirteen school year.
One of the things I would just probably bring the attention to the board is that right now, and I did give information on why we need to do what, um, at least for our lunches, for our students. There really is a federal regulation that we need to get closer there and I provide us with information. Um, we don't have all the information that we need right now for the adult prices. Uh, on the sheet that they're bringing up, ten cents, that's our best guess right now, that the federal government has not told us specifically what we need to do with that. And they really do for both the lunches, it could be come out that we're finding where we're at right now, it could be that we're biased since I think on the sheet we put a ten cent increase, but that's what we did for the students. And also for the adult breakfast, we did not make any changes there, but again, they could come out and tell us that we need to raise the price. That's really something that we've been waiting, we've been asking for the answer for, for quite a while now. And assuming that the moment this board meeting is done, then tomorrow will tell us what we need to do. But, um, for now, we don't have, those are the two areas that I'm still not sure that they will not change.
You probably don't have that because you think that's included in the farm bill.
Yes, I agree, that's right.
In the farm, yeah, so you're not going to know that there because it's still, that's not, it's not like that.
So.
USDA information to the farm bill.
But those are the two things that we're not a hundred percent sure on yet based on the information or lack of information right now.
Based on that, I'd just make the motion to approve, change the bottom. It meets requirements set forth by, um, USDA.
Just want to clarify this, uh, inside everyone's agenda, we've got, it says a P schedule. We've got to talk about the logicality of it.
Yes, this was informational for you because it gives you some information on why we need to do what they said again, deals with that.
But the only change is to the P schedule.
Yes, that's right.
None of the other items changed.
None of the other items changed.
Motion by Dave. Second, write down. Uh, any further discussion? Clearing out all with the favors, if you want to say aye.
Aye.
If you want to say aye. Motion carries. Number two, review and consider approval of our membership of Minnesota School Board Association for twelve thirteen school year. Motion write down. Second, discussion. We move to the discussion. Clearing out all with the favors, if you want to say aye.
Aye.
If you want to say aye. Motion carries. Number three, review and consider approval of elementary parents, if you can. Hey, what, are we on that old?
Yep.
I have not, our.
Oh, yeah, we're on that elementary channel right now, so what you change, I can come over and.
Okay, well, I think all of you got the changes. And I spoke with a couple of you about some questions, I think, um, hopefully I was able to answer your questions. What we've done really, last year when I took over, didn't make any changes because we were already into July and so throughout the year, um, we just kind of, that something would come up, we would put it in a file. And what we wanted to do is just really clean up some language, simplify it a little bit and give our, the biggest change probably in our attendance policy and, um, I worked closely with, with Scurry's County this past year, uh, dealing with fluency and attendance and so what I did there is try to give that a little, um, give it some teeth and, um, get it in line with some of our policies in mind with some of our neighboring schools that if we have transfers, you know, within the, the school districts that is, that are fairly similar. So, um, any specific questions on anything?
Tom. Okay, motion by Bob, second, second number. We move to the discussion. Clearing out all with the favors, if you want to say aye.
Aye.
If you want to say aye. Motion carries. Okay, twenty-four, set the date for more planning sessions to create district approval of the students.
Yes, at this time, this is typically what we've done every year. Uh, I just fixed the corresponding date to what was administered last year, so I'm certainly hoping to change that date. There's nothing magic on my calendar or anything else as far as that date, but I thought that we started pointing forward discussion on motion.
You think it's more than five o'clock or?
Or a half, or I think we're verbal. It's because I'm only doing, going to have to have a little more session.
Everybody at six-thirty, um, who was the?
Fourteen?
I think it's fourteen.
So we'll keep on at fourteen, two yards, fourteen, that's six thirty.
Eric?
I don't know, we just hope I can figure it out.
Okay. All right, so we moved to that six-thirty and fourteen. Number five, we do consider a cool twelve thirteen secondary student parent.
Um, I sent you the changes as well, there's really only two. Uh, one was the leadership opportunity guidelines and that was one. Matts took the lead on that with the committee. And I, I supported that, so we carried it over from the athletic handbook, also we put it in the student handbook. Uh, making the team not affect the student for the whole year, it still have a consequence, but they will be able to regain some of those leadership opportunities sooner than before. Am I sure anything I had earlier?
Dad can discuss it now on order. Just get it out of the way over there. That's the big change for the, um, our student parent handbook for athletics, I guess. Um, they have had some conversations about it afterwards and some, some questions are, um, perceived discrepancies as far as, uh, like a student, if you notice, um, the changes, no longer are they one year, uh, but what's been changed is one royalty, either sweet fest or homecoming. The student comes off their posi- officer positions are for the current and the following school year and then the rationale, a reason for that still continuing to be for the following school year is because it's a, it's an ongoing year-long thing. And so if a, if a high school league violation would take place in May, then they could be ineligible for a week, you know, or at the end of May and then, and then not really serve a penalty for it. Um, stu- students are still allowed to be on student council or not removed from student council, just can't serve in the, in the president or vice president positions, officer positions within student council. So it's not robbing them completely of the leadership of positions. Also, just some, um, misconception or possible from reading this, um, and I'll just start from the top and then I'll pause where, where maybe we might lose some rewording if the board feels it's necessary. But if a student becomes ineligible due to a Minnesota State High School League violation, the student will be removed from any leadership positions to which that student has been elected or appointed. In addition to this, the students will not be allowed to serve in any of the following positions for the stated timeframe from the date the administration notifies the student of the violation. And then that's where I'm going to start. Um, there's a question where it says these include one royalty, either sweet fest or homecoming, comma, student council officer positions for the current and following school year. And the question was, is, 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 does the royalty run into the student council officer positions for the school year? Do we need to make a period there to separate those entities? Um, I'm not sure how, how the board reads that when they read, but, but the intent and, and what is interpreted in this is that it is one royalty, either sweet fest or homecoming, and this student council officer positions for the current and following school year. But not, not one royalty for the current and following school year, if that makes sense. And, and it's encompassed anyways because there's multiple royalties within the same year. Uh, the, the other thing that I think probably should, um, be added to this, just for clarification after reading it, is I think that at the end, we should have a line that says all penalties are in addition to the Minnesota State High School League regulations. Just so that there's no, um, confusion that, hey, you know, I, I served my, you know, suspension from the Minnesota State High School League, so what, you know, was going on with this leadership position? Or, you know, um, hey, I did the leadership position thing, so I shouldn't have to sit out that Minnesota State High School League regulation. I don't know if there's any other questions for me or the board.
This is just their first time. I guess.
You know, the, the thing is, is as far as the leadership position for, for some of these, if you look at it, you know, more often than not, the, the second violation is not really going to. Uh, it, it could, but it's probably not going to affect the capital position because that has probably solved itself the first time around, um, with replacement and stuff like that. But they have to, um, certainly we could look at a step policy for it, you know, from, from a student council standpoint, you know, I would. I'm not so sure that that person is, is going to continue to student council. I, that's a good question. I haven't really thought about that. I just. What's that?
Does it happen?
Well, it hasn't, um, but it, it's not to say it couldn't, it's, you know, I'd like to think that these are leadership positions and, you know, students aren't making good choices and choosing to be good leaders who perhaps have made a mistake and were providing a way to still, you know, reinstate them. Um, I'm, you know, I wouldn't be opposed to them having to follow the same, you know, guidelines over again, you know? It's, it's, it's still a, I mean, it's still a penalty towards that.
Maybe just the better. If you do the same comments, mostly that's my issue.
I think if it's, you just reinstated the same consequence, you wouldn't have to add an additional line saying if you do it again, the same consequence will occur because if they do it again, this would be a consequence.
Because it just says if a student becomes ineligible due to a Minnesota State High School League violation, so if they have a second violation, they become ineligible and you reenact.
The only thing that you may want to, you know, on hindsight, if you wanted, some people would say, you know, in that the line administrative discretion if further appearances occur or something like that.
Which it's nice to have a clear line for, for me, you know? The thing is, is, is if you, if you start adding that, if somebody, if somebody does, uh, for instance, in the royalty, you're still going to find yourself that if you want to double it, then somebody could get a high school league violation as a tenth grader or as an eleventh grader and, and another one later on would be completely wiped out, that's just, you know?
I would feel comfortable leaving it as is, if it really may have that same consequence, because that is, it is a big consequence to those students for getting given the opportunity, you know what? If I don't do it again, I, I, I will be rewarded in a sense or be able to kind of get my keep back. So. Uh, the other, any other questions on the leadership?
Basically that one sentence you were talking about Max where he talks about, you know, the royalty of student council. That sentence, they should just say these include one royalty, either sweet fest or homecoming, and student council officer positions for the current college year.
Good, yeah.
Just put and in there.
And they come off, but and.
I think that.
Shouldn't you, what do we did, and, or student council office?
And or?
And or. Because they use this, putting the word and in there, it means that these, this includes one royalty, either sweet fest, homecoming, and student council offices. So that's.
That's.
Together.
That's correct.
But I think that's correct.
If they would, if they set off the royalty, and, it, it's not like if they miss the royalty, does that means they could become a student.
It's gonna be, I think it's gonna be and. They can come up with and. I think that's how.
That's the intent of it, yes, is that, is that they couldn't miss the, miss the sweet fest and then now I can become the president of student council. Because it has to be and.
Are we? Yeah.
Just take the come up, put the and. It'd be my suggestion.
Uh, the other change that we did have in, uh, high school, middle school handbook was about forty years ago, where staff came together and we brought the grading scale within like a plus or minus two percent for, within each course. Um, that has helped tremendously with the consistency and now we're looking at going at even more consistent where every course, every classroom, this would be the grading scale. Teachers would still have the option as far as what to assess, how to weight the grades, but if you get a ninety-two percent in ninth grade English, that's going to be your, um, A minus. And if I get a ninety-two percent in geometry, that's going to be an A minus, so that it's all one grading scale. So you don't have parents saying, you know, in English I got this, but in math I got that. So it's just bringing all the teachers together on a common grading scale. The other piece that will be handed out in addition to this would be the, um, electronic device policy that you guys had. And we want to hand that out as a whole, there's, you know, the basic statement on electronic devices stayed the same, but as we staff, we're going to go through the policy itself as we passed it back in June. And that all of his will be signing off, we'll be going through that when we go through the handbook as well. But it is incorporated into the discipline policy for talks about electronic devices as well as, uh, you know. as well as, uh, you know, the teacher's discretion if they can have it out. So, any other questions or concerns on the grading scale?
Any other questions on that? Change is that student, change is...
Is, is that same, is the same wording included in the student handbook? The same wording?
The wording that Max just changed here.
Okay, so we'll make that wording in both of them. Okay.
If I, if I could, just do one more comment on that. We're, we're changing to our and. Were you okay with adding all penalties are in addition to the Minnesota State High School League? Yes. Um, and then I just did want to mention about the captain thing is, it's, it's for the next complete sport season as well as the current season, um, they will be unable to serve as a captain for the next complete sport season that the student participates in. But it probably should be reworded to include that current season that they... I mean, it says up on the top that they would be removed from any leadership positions, but it maybe it should point blank say that in...
It is because student man unable to serve as captain for the current and next complete sport season.
Next complete sport season. And I'd like, I'd like really to have that word complete, um, sport season that they, that they could participate in, meaning that they have to participate in the complete season. So it's not like I paid my seventy-five dollar activity fee to be out for basketball. I was out for two or three weeks and then I didn't finish the complete season and now I can be baseball captain or something like that.
So this is just our first.
No, he's saying you can't be an in sport. You're, you have a violation. You're not, you can't be a captain.
So if you have a violation in the, in the winter, you wouldn't be able to be a captain any longer that winter season or the next complete sport season that you participate in. So that would be the spring. If you were in the spring sport, it would be in the fall. If you were in, if you weren't in a spring sport, it would be the winter if you weren't in.
So if I got, um...
Violation.
Violation during football this year, and I took baseball in the spring, I couldn't be captain of football next year.
Correct.
Correct.
Or if you did, say you got into football, you participated in basketball, you couldn't be a captain, you couldn't be a captain in baseball.
Aren't we kind of taken, okay, here's, here's what I'm thinking. Coaches still approve captains, right? Okay, if I got a violation in the winter, are you saying that I can't be a captain in baseball season? Uh, young people do make mistakes. And penalizing with the state, and I don't condone them making mistakes, but I'm thinking as a coach, uh, if the kid paid his penalty in the winter and I think that that kid has got his head on right and made some changes, and I'm the baseball coach, and I, I, I don't know, I have no fight to agree with. Understand what I'm saying?
I do.
Because now, I mean, maybe for a black kid in the winter, he's paid his dues and now he's reformed. And now he's back and, and baseball cap, or baseball coach says he was voted captain and, and coaches make the final agreement on it. I know that. Have a vote sometime, but you still make the final judgment.
This is over and above what the Minnesota State High School League required?
The Minnesota State High School League has no requirement for captain position at all period. It's a school position, you know, per...
So Bob, we're, so act, in actuality, we're changing what our past policy has been.
Correct.
We're reducing it, correct. Yeah, it was for, it was for a whole calendar year.
That was last year, right?
That, that, well, and for as far back as I believe we had nineteen ninety-two, him, as far back as nineteen ninety-two, I think is, was the year captain.
You agree with me on that, Brian?
Yes, and I agree with you. I was not aware of that.
But what if it happens to set that last week, like you said, it's a different penalty?
Yeah, it's, it's tough. I mean, we're going from a, a, a year position and, and I understand it's a, it's a different circumstance, it's a different sport, it's a, a different set of athletes if, you know? But it's, but it's still the athletic department in the school and the community as a whole that they're representing. I mean, that's, that's kind of part of it, yet, you know, you understand that the other sports teams that are playing, you know, you're standing up in a leadership position.
Yeah, I know. But I, if I, if I have a violation in Thanksgiving, and I do something stupid, like all young people can't, there are plenty examples of people that have made mistakes and have come back and now will be successful. If I have a violation in November, and I got my head on straight and I paid my dues and I can't be a captain of the baseball team.
As this policy needs.
And, and the baseball coach may say, you know, the kid has changed his life, done all these things. I don't know.
But if I'm on the state, or now the current policy says, uh, he has, he may set a state, it's going to be a full calendar year before, so in essence...
This is better, but...
This is easier than what, what it was. So it is moving for the concerns that you have right now.
So what, I, I think the, the tough thing is, is I sat with coaches who didn't wanna give up the year. I sat with, you know, people, I don't think the full year is fair myself, but, but how do you draw a line? Where do you draw a line to say, is it, is it the two week, is it a two week period? Now, now that you can stand up, because they're representing our community too, especially in some sports. They're walking out on center court, they're walking out on the middle of the field. They're doing these things and it's not, it's not just their teammates that know that these things happen. So it is a representation as well, and I get that, I mean, I know that people make mistakes.
You agree that young people can make mistakes, right?
Absolutely. I, I do agree with that full-heartedly, and that's why I think we need to establish a way, what, what I think that, that part of this gives them an opportunity to do if they are a captain material. It gives them an opportunity to, to fulfill a season being under somebody else's leadership and prove, and prove that they can, they can sit under somebody else's leadership and still be a good captain, character-worthy person, and then step up to the plate where their timeframe is up. You know, the thing that I share with people when they have their, their violations is, is that a leadership tagged position isn't gonna make you any more of a leader than your character will, and that's the most important thing. You know, and I think we have to provide an opportunity for them to show that that character is there and to be a leader.
Matt, I know we talked about this at the athletic meeting. Did you then need us to coaches to tweak this thing and then this is kind of what you guys came up with as part of the coaches?
Yeah. I mean, it's not, it's not easy anytime somebody has to face the consequences, you know? It, I, I don't know if, you know, if you're gonna, then you, then you probably would just remove them from the captain from the... You know, Bob, I think you're saying is remove them from the captain from that season that they're in.
I can, I can see if I'm off the wrestling in November and I got a violation, I shouldn't be captain. I, I got no problem with that. But in, uh, six months later, the baseball season, hey, I, I've made dramatic changes and that coach thinks, and he can use me or she can use me as an example. I think we're taking something away from that next season.
So what about, um, last week of wrestling?
Please, last week of wrestling, you, you'd have to do two weeks in the Minnesota State High School.
Right, but it ding you, it's two weeks or two...
So that would ding you for baseball.
It wouldn't because it's two weeks or two events, it's never longer. And so if you start your, your wrestling and you have two events that last week, then you, then your two weeks is given up. You're in the, in between. So I did, I know, there's not an easy path.
I'm just saying, I can, I can give you a ton of examples where kids stayed in school, ended up being successful even after they made a stupid mistake and they turned their lives around or they used were smart enough not to be black.
That probably...
I guess, I, I will probably, I'd need more course, like Max has, over there. Because there can't be just one student that is the best, and the best leadership in every sport. And maybe if you give some other kid an opportunity that is maybe not a starter or something else, be actually recognized as, as the leader, okay? Or has all the academic leadership, maybe not the, uh, athletic thing. So, you know, you have to be everybody. So I understand kids make mistakes, but there's a penalty. And I know that there's a lot of kids that, that are shying away from doing things because they are in sports and because they are looking at being the leader of that, that sport. And they are seeing ways from those different situations. So I, I, I guess we're compromising with, 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 not in entire year, but, you know, next, the next sport season, if you're all for baseball, well, we're sorry, we're gonna have to go under somebody else's leadership for that. And if you can make it through another season with somebody else at the helm and improve to the, to everybody, it's not just the coaches. I think it's everybody in the community, you know? So I would, I would make a recommendation, believe that as you have it with, if at least one sport, then they would have to be the same.
Is that a motion?
Yes, that would be my motion.
Okay, so we have another motion with, say Mark's making a motion with the change of that's...
Right, and so can I just be clear that those changes are Max, in line number five, after Homecoming, we're adding and.
Correct.
And then in the next line, we're adding as captain for the current and next complete season. And then the last sentence is going to be all penalties are in addition to Minnesota State High School League regulations? Correct, okay. Okay.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mark. Second, is there any further discussion?
I just would say that I think this policy, and I understand not quite, this policy is less penalizing than the current policy is, and I still, and I do, I think there has to be some team and some, something to deter you from maybe making that bad decision right away. Not that, you know, again, people make stupid decisions all the time and hopefully they learn from those decisions. But I just think that, um, that there needs to be something other that has, um, the team into it.
And I have also valued it for...
Right.
It's accent characters.
And, you know, I talked to other school districts as well. I know that bold doubles, they double the high school league, whatever the high school league rule is, they double it, that's their school athletic policy. So your first offense is four weeks or four contracts, et cetera, et cetera. So, you know, just so the board can be aware, it's not, we wouldn't be the only district that has penalties above the Minnesota State High School.
Okay, uh, any further discussion? Here now, who can say aye?
Aye.
Close same sign.
Aye.
Um, who cares?
Number six.
Okay. Number six, we do consider approval of twelve thirteen student parent handbook.
Yeah, unless anybody had any other questions in addition to the staff proposed change that we discussed on leadership positions. That's the only change I have, is student parent handbook.
I like those through proof. Dave, second, Mark, further discussion? Clear now, who can say aye?
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. We do consider approval of the twelve thirteen game activities handbook.
That's the second handbook for coaches and advisors in addition, um, and at, uh, at the end of the season reports. So all the coaches are responsible for filling out payment voucher to receive payment once all duties are completed. Just, um, a clarification, it's been a practice I've been following anyways, but I, you know, we just wanted to make sure that our coaches understand they have to get their inventory report in and, you know, they can, at that time after they need do their evaluation, that's the time that we'll sign the voucher and pay for this. But I just wanted to include all duties so that they understand it's not just I have everything about this done.
And that was the only change you have?
That's the only change, yes.
Motion by Gary. Okay, further discussion? Clear now, who can say aye?
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Number eight, we do consider approval for membership of resource training and solutions as well for thirteen school year.
This is a ongoing piece that we have done, um, they're very supportive of sports after all and other community project resources.
Come on, motion of Mark, second, yeah, for the discussion? Clear now, who can say aye?
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Number nine, we do consider approval for membership of, uh...
CM, C, CM, you are the C. And they provide the district with more support by the answer payment training. It's, I think that's important piece.
So, motion there? Second, any further move? Any further discussion? Clear now, who can say aye?
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Tim, we do consider approval of resolution for membership of Minnesota State High School if you're part of the next school. Okay, uh, motion right now? Second, Mark.
Do you believe my here will call?
Is there any further discussion?
Do we pass it?
Oh, we, we would not be able to say in Minnesota State High School.
I don't hear what you're asking. Yeah, please pass it.
Okay, we have a motion.
Are you gonna have to eliminate one section of the paper?
Not for a while, we don't want it to see end of the...
Bob?
Aye.
Dave?
Aye.
Mark?
Aye.
Deb?
Aye.
Dave, John?
Aye.
Gretchen? And then?
Aye. Motion carries. And number eleven, we do consider approval of bid for eighteen concrete barriers. Uh, that is fifty dollars per concrete barrier.
That was the only bid that we did see.
It was?
Um, it was, yep.
So, motion Dave?
Second.
Yeah, any further discussion? Clear now, who can say aye?
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries.
So I, I, it just sort of works where I will send David a letter saying that it has been accepted and then we're trying to, um, have a review.
Uh, moving on to personnel. Number one from the personnel is to, we do consider approval of Jeremy White, sixth grade social studies reading, uh, full-time teacher effective twenty-eight to August twenty-eighth, two thousand twelve. So, open the box, second, yeah, any further discussion?
Yes. More of a comment, there are times when we can sign contracts contingent on board approval. This is one of them. A superintendent can't talk to us individually without violating the media law, okay? Other districts do this all the time and is past practice, but we are not other districts. And I would urge you, Bob, to continue to do the things above board, transparent. It's a fresh start for all of us here. Uh, the, the amount of distrust or mistrust in the community because of some backdoor deals, so on, that's gone on in the past, we have a fresh start here tonight. And, uh, in this situation, it was totally right.
We did follow up, see, because the board put in place, uh, fire this particular person. I think there are situations...
I think there are situations where, because of time constraints, we do need to make a decision on whether we're going to hire somebody, and it's always contingent upon board approval. That was made very clear to this hire, um, that it wasn't dependent upon the scheme and board approving that particular, um, recommendation.
Okay, and we do a motion, second, is there any further discussion? Here now, who's in line, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Then number two, we do consider approval of Jean Hay. Jean Hay outlined to guide our students to Western Poland Summer School, classes around June twenty-third, August tenth. Then they is approximately three hours per day. Motion carries.
Aye.
And second, Deb, any further discussion? Here now, who's in line, say aye.
Aye.
Close same sign. Motion carries. Okay, and we're on to registration for the state.
Okay, well, I don't have a whole lot, and, uh, I covered the changes to the handbook. Right now, we're just, uh, Paulie and I are getting ready for registration, and, uh, we're gonna be sending a letter out to all of the elementary students, uh, sometime this week, probably on Thursday, outlining the registration in open house, and we'll be sending out our kindergarten letter outlining the, um, the pricing and, and things like that. Tomorrow, we have, uh, teachers coming in for in-service on, uh, our new reading curriculum, and we'll be doing that in a couple of different sessions, and, uh, otherwise, uh, we're just, just kind of plugging away, getting, it's been nice having a year under my belt and, and having some time to, uh, you know, really prepare for this school year, so. Any questions?
Thank you, sir. Uh, Matt, you ready?
Um, summer is going well, it's been a good summer for, as far as not many cancellations due to rain, we got just one for heat. Um, so that's been good, however, it's stuff on our, our playing fields as you may be out there, but, uh, we're gonna end the summer here with over eight hundred participants, um, which is good, our numbers are strong. Um, it's our last concert in the park this week at, at Gretchen's Park, so if you haven't made it out there, we're at over eleven hundred people so far. We had one week of over four hundred people on July fifth, so it's, it's been doing well down there. Uh, some other new community events I talked about are movies in the park, that'll be in August and September. Uh, few, uh, projects this summer, our ECFP room has moved, uh, to the west end of the building, so we've done some painting, some flooring, we're gonna put some smartboard in there, and, uh, we're happy to be in the building still, so, um, we think, uh, it's a, it's a good fit for us to be there in collaboration in that. So our ECFP and preschool room has moved. Uh, we just paint at the outside of the Adult Dead Center, and that's been a very nice, uh, asset for this summer, being able to offer a lot of classes there, uh, even, uh, youth and adult classes. So, uh, we don't kind of have to worry about, uh, hallways being done or getting in the way of the facilities. And, um, I think that's about it, unless you guys have any questions.
All right, thanks, Matt. Uh, Laura, is there a question?
All right, I'm gonna start by handing the floor over to Brittany Garrett, she's going to talk about one of the projects that our FFA had done this summer.
As she said, I'm bringing her tonight, the vice president of our FFA chapter. And in June, we had, we done, we made the courtyard. What we did in the middle school courtyard was we trimmed all the bushes and trees, pulled all the weeds among the flower beds, cleaned up all the debris that was laying around, and put no chips down, and primed our ground trees and shrubs to, to control weeds. And the high school courtyard, we divided and trimmed some of the perennials, cut it off over there, and then crewed and shaped all bushes. We pulled all the leaves, took out the corners, pulled the shrubs, tilled and cleaned up the corner of the courtyard, and put down no chips. I hope you guys all had a chance to check out the courtyard.
Right.
And then have some future plans, uh, continue for remaining in, in heading, heading in the summer. Um, plant some more perennial in the high school courtyard where the, the wood chips are. We saw in ours, we planted perennial in the high school courtyard corner. Put bird feeders up in those for seed, and more plant of like in the middle school courtyard. And we had some helpers, we had FFA members on several study projects, um, a few eighth graders to be them involved in what we were doing. Hope we did them, uh, right at FFA. And then Prey and Natalie, Veronica and Amy, and Christine, Jim Schuman, Carrie and Carol Shaver, and Joan and Kelly Spudger. They donated all the wood chips for free, so nothing, we haven't paid anything out for the courtyard, so. I'm good on, I'll volunteer.
And I would really like to say thank you, and they worked up, uh, a sweat, and it was hot, and they did just a great job. And they enjoyed doing it, they came to us with the project. It was probably back in April, I think, towards the end of April, they said, you know, can we do something? And so they started talking about ideas, and so I'm very grateful, and it looks wonderful. They just did a great job for us. Um, a couple of other things that have come up, um, just for your own information, uh, the Youth Service Task Force has nominated Randy Limkill, Rachel Rittenhouse, and Alex Whitcomb to serve, um, a year, um, there, board, as part of the Surgeon's Tony who can serve at sports, so they will be representing teenagers and some of the different crises and different things that they go through. So I'd like to really say thank you to them for that, because I think they will serve our, our students well in, in our area. Um, we have some meetings coming up here in August with some of our different departments, as well as looking at curriculum and, and different things, our special ed department, the transit, with, there'll be a transition meeting, some of the things that, uh, students will need to be able to accomplish, and you need to design curriculum for in regards to moving from high school on into what they're going to do after high school, um, there's some different changes there. Our middle school science department is going to be meeting, um, both on curriculum as well as science department management, both with chemical stories and some different things in that area. Uh, our academic coaches are going to be meeting early August, uh, to talk about the vision and the goals that we have for our staff in this building, uh, as we look into the next year. So then, we have boot camp, starting for both reading and math, July thirtieth, and we had, uh, several parents calling, and all very grateful to the school board for giving their kids the opportunity to have something that they can come to here in town and be able to work on some of their skills. So they are very grateful, I've received so many phone calls, um, just thanking for the opportunity. And we will be interviewing for our assistant position here in, uh, secondary office on Thursday. So hopefully we'll have an hire to bring to you, uh, our next board meeting, so I'm excited about that. And then with that, Patty and I are working very hard getting ready for registration, which is kind of a double duty without having that position in place, so. Do you have any questions for Ms., and thank you so much for giving me, right, and we will be a wonderful addition for our staff. I appreciate it.
Thanks, Laura.
Uh, Max? Well, I've been, uh, actually, uh, one of the things that I've been spending most of my time on, we're not as coordinating with FFA when the water, our athletic fields, and when the water, their pot. But, but I can tell you that, and I think, um, I can safely say that, that four years ago when I began coaching here, it seemed like there was such a conflict or like, yeah, and it was, it was almost like we felt like we were competing somehow against FFA and athletics and, you know, for water, watering these fields, and, um, I can say that our relations are great, and, and, and I, Joe Flanders is the guy that I talked to, I know his cell phone number, I don't have it saved in there, but we talk, I know it's a daily basis, we're discoordinating, but that pump is being used almost twenty-four hours a day right now. Um, we had broken pipes all over some of our athletic fields that were getting down because the stuff headed to the sprinkler system wasn't, um, worthy of that, but FFA pot is gonna continue to run. I'm in the process right now of, uh, hoping to enlist some more corporate sponsors for our corporate sponsorship program as well as meeting, um, and getting renewals, actually this afternoon, I had a chance with, um, Mr. Hughes to go out and introduce him to some of our corporate sponsors and thank them. Um, in, in the past, it had been just a letter that was mailed to corporate sponsors asking for renewal, and the goal is yours, for me to get out into those businesses, thank them, um, and it was perfect time to introduce a new superintendent with that. Also, just news in the, um, athletics, uh, I know that Bucat, you know, have a soccer club in the area, and it has looked at wanting, um, a proposal for potentially becoming a high school sport. Uh, just, uh, we just lost our only conference school that has soccer, um, Team Minnewaska just cut four sports, um, boys and girls cross country and boys and girls soccer, due to enrollment numbers and budget and other things, so. Um, that's actually the second, uh, cross country program in the area, about here in two years, which this will be the second year that they'll do a cross country in Minnewaska. Something for, I mean, advocating that we're cutting sports or anything like that, it's just something that we, we keep our eyes on a school the size of it, something that we want to offer. Is there anybody other question?
Max, uh, what's on the board, uh, who? Well, we met last night, and, uh, Doug Miller, he talked about the down chief of finance, audit, audit, moved up a month this year. And Larry, uh, excuse me, Laurie talked a little bit about trying to get more students from Starbucks to the Beacon program, related to OC. She, some of the students said, uh, that, uh, Beacon are at the same level as what our, uh, Starbucks. But in order to do that, they have to hire some qualified personnel, and that would take effect by twenty thirty, twenty thirteen, excuse me? Long time, long time. Well, they spent some time on the certified handbook adoption, and, uh, the health insurance actually leveled off. It was no issues, as a matter of fact, it had a percent decrease. And, uh, summer school, that starts for thirty, uh, instead, and they're trouble, they're having trouble finding car for, uh, the summer school. People that don't stay around for summer. And, uh, it sounds like the other superintendents mentioned that they're having trouble finding van drivers also. And, uh, I guess that's about it. Uh, Andrew?
Uh, first of all, I would like to thank the, uh, board and the community for allowing me to serve, um, this community, and I'm excited to be here. I'm very thankful. I would tell you that I am looking also forward to the time when I can say like David did, that I have one year under my belt, um, because it seems like every year I'm doing something new that I have done before, and it's, it's just a learning experience every year. People have been just extremely welcoming, uh, for my, 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 my community, and I'm very grateful, both of us are very grateful for that. Met with a number of community members, they come on in, staff members come in, and, uh, they introduce themselves, they need to talk about a concern, so I'll be able to, you know, follow it a little bit more. Uh, I've been invited to partake in a few more activities, Lions Club and a few other places that are starting to fight again. Met with one administrator today, and, um, he's also invited me in to meet with his congregation, particularly as we start to talk about the letting in, we're looking for information on them. Max already mentioned that we were starting to look at, um, visiting, um, a lot of sponsors, so I would certainly invite anybody that is interested in that to get over Max, um, I think it's a great, um, way to support the community and the school. Today, we also met with pictures about, um, safety and health, um, I know they do okay, a piece, pieces, uh, pieces of the last meeting, there's another step we're gonna need to go through, I'll get that all to you in the next, um, meeting, it's a very minor piece, but you'll be getting a little bit more additional information, but that'll be out, probably be able to have it in. We have an understanding, we just need to do a number of approvals and line items, but it won't be a deal, but, uh, in order to make the state's meetings, we'll, we'll need to do that, but that'll be at the next board meeting. Met with the administrative team today, we're talking about a lot of things, transportation, building to the ground, the KVs, recent equipment, Grand Santa Roger, uh, associate schedules, the opening workshops, or opening workshop schedules. Laurie and David and I have met and talked about those, we're putting those in place at this point. Um, I've been through a central education district meeting, so I'm one of the superintendents, one of the board members. Uh, I need to meet with, uh, the director of that particular organization, I need to learn more about the benefits that our district gets, and also the cost, uh, the cost of our district, so I have a better understanding of that, and I talked with him, we're in a sudden meeting for that. I've also been in contact with our, the district's, um, church representatives, I would like to get a better understanding of our, um, workers comp piece, and see what's going on there, is relatively high, uh, it's not well, it is high. So we need to talk about what we can do to make those numbers look better for us, so I need to get a better understanding of all the insurance pieces, so I'm gonna meet with those people. We used to be packed full of first warning as I moved into superintendency, um, I can tell you that a lot more to learn, but I'm excited to be here.